Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. Before I read, we open our public hearing, I just want to thank the Pete Junior High students that are here this evening. They could call us and interview us, they could come to a school board meeting, and what else could they do, Jackson? There was one more thing. Is that right?
That's just those two.
Okay. So some of them are here because they wanted to come and be a part of our school board meeting this evening. So thank you for coming. I'm going to start with item B on the agenda, the public hearing. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of the hearing for the 2017-2018 school calendar. This notice was published in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Courier on February 15, 2017. The board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk up to the school calendar? If you do, please come up to the mic. Hearing none, I'm going to close this hearing, and we will move on then to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jenny. Any questions or discussion regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item D, public comment.
Just so everybody's aware, we again are very excited to hold our meetings again at city council chambers. Some individuals may be new to viewing the Cedar Falls School Board meetings, and I wanted to provide some information regarding our public comment section. Our school board meetings are, by Iowa code, considered open meetings. An open meeting means the meeting is open to the public to observe and listen to the proceedings of the meeting. At the public comment section of the agenda, citizens have the opportunity to make brief statements to the board. To make a public comment, a citizen must simply notify the district office or board president by 4:00 PM the day of the board meeting, make sure the comments will be less than three minutes, and keep the comments germane to school district business. At this time, we do have individuals signed up for public comments, so we do have up first Mr. Larry Wykoff. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, school board. Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Advocate for the people of Cedar Falls. In addition to Sunday's editorial that they almost got my name spelled right, there shouldn't have been an H in it. I told my wife last week that I bought 50 acres of prime land in Tennessee that was at a bargain basement price. She told me to forget it, we don't have authority for fixed expenditure, AFE, and I was out of line. Okay, fake news. But this proposal to buy 50 acres next to the UNI is similar to the Affordable Care Act, which is a mandate and requirement on us citizens for items we don't need or can't even pay for. All weekend, people came up to me, and when I was out in the weekend, and told me to stay after this, this is a terribly bad waste of time and money. Bottom line, people, it's an increasing tax and spend in this community has got to end in Cedar Falls. We'll be ready to stop the high school if you use this element to up your game and vote for, or try for a bond vote. This has got to stop. We are not, people tell me, we have got to stop this kind of activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Up next, we have Kathy Pingle. Welcome.
Hi, Kathy Pingle, 311 Angie Drive, Cedar Falls. Last, at the last school board meeting, there was a wonderful patron here who thought that investing in this property would be a good investment, even if you did not build the new high school. My feeling is, and several people that I've talked to, is that we're not an investment company, the Cedar Falls School Board, and that this would not be a good investment, that if we have extra money, that that money should be used to pay down the debt instead of buying more land and for the purpose of maybe a school, for the high school would pass or not pass. Another thing that I want everyone to consider, especially the folks at home, is that with the new Board of Education Secretary for Schools, we don't know exactly what this is, these programs are going to look like. We don't know what school vouchers are going to entail. When I called the Board of Education, they had no idea. In Des Moines, when I called the school board, there's no idea of what this is going to entail. I asked them, do you think that it's going to be a voucher that students could get or parents could get so that they could homeschool? And this, the homeschool bill could be paid for? And there really is no consensus on what's going to happen. But my granddaughter is homeschooled this year, and she's not only surviving, she's thriving. It's a great program. So I highly encourage anyone who's had some challenges with their kids, maybe in the schools, or whatever, just a student that needs to homeschool, that they would consider the homeschool. But because of this, we don't really know. I know that you've got this chart that you have used quite a bit, the projection chart. There are a couple of things that I would like to point out. With this chart, especially in 2012, there's no definition or explanation in this six-page or eight-page brochure that tells the folks that in 2012, we simulated a school of about 400 kids. And when I did some projecting over the next 12 years, a lot of these kids are going to be, of course, they'll all be graduated from high school, we will not be assimilating another school. So I think that your projections are not really maybe going to pan out to be like this. The other thing that I was concerned about is with the elimination of homeschool that, or open enrollment, I mean, with the elimination of open enrollment, that that might have some bearing.
Kathy, Kathy, you need to wrap this up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The other thing that I was concerned about is jobs.
Kathy, Kathy, your three, your three minutes are up, and so thank you for your comments this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The third person signed up for a public comment is Dwayne Hamilton.
My name is Dwayne Hamilton. I live at 1911 Victory Drive in Cedar Falls. First, I would like to commend the Cedar Falls School Board for being willing to make tough decisions and to have vision for the future. I strongly encourage them to move forward and proceed with the land purchase being presented this evening. Our students and our schools are the future. I was proud to have served for 24 years on the Cedar Falls School Board and was part of the board which, in conjunction with the city of Cedar Falls, made the decision and had the vision to purchase 40 acres a number of years ago, where our new elementary school and a new city park will open the fall of 2018. It was then a cornfield. But the board had vision. I have been part of the Cedar Falls School District Facilities Planning Committee as we have reviewed what is best for our students and for our district. Decisions have not been easy, but have always focused on our students. And now, one of my biggest enjoyments I receive each day are the smiles and eagerness of students as I climb into Bus 35 and transport them to school. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Thank you, Dwayne. All right, that's the end of our public comment. Dr. Patie, would you like to?
Yeah, with communications, it's always an opportunity for board members or district staff to provide communications to the full board or provide comments regarding a question that's arisen during public comment. I think the last several weeks now, the board has heard the presentation about the potential high school land that's on the agenda later this evening for a recommendation and approval. We'll have a short slide presentation coming up here as well. But just a reminder that this is not a tax increase. This is going to be paid for through savings that we've made through the one-cent sales tax. We certainly see this as a strong investment as we look at the payback, as well as the long-term cost and the escalator clause that's included within this purchase price this evening, where it's, we know that any money that we have within our bank account certainly won't rise as much as this land value will with the consumer price index. Finally, I would just say, a comment that came up from, from public comment was the closure of a building, excuse me, the closure three or four years ago of a building. At that time, we had about 250 students that came into our districts from the closure of the University Lab School. And again, those students are students that now have been assimilated into our school district and are not solely pulled out from the projections that we have by RSP. RSP is a nationally renowned demographer. They have been extremely accurate for the last five to seven years with our enrollment projections, and we fully anticipate that those projections to be accurate into the future.
Thank you. Moving on now to Student Board Representative, Julie Jorgensen.
Thank you, welcome back. All right, so not this past Friday, but the Friday before that, as I've been talking for months and months, we had our dance marathon. I would just like to thank you and I and just everyone at Cedar Falls for coming together and really just focusing on the kids, and what we're actually there for is raising money for Iowa Children's Hospital. So I'd like to give a big thanks to everyone who is part of that. Okay, so for Student Senate, next up, we are planning our spring activities. In the past, we've usually done like 5Ks and stuff like that, just to raise money for the school. We haven't fully decided what we're going to do yet, that is still up in the air, but we are excited for what's lying next. And yeah, all right, so student activities, quite a few this week. As many people already know, but in case you don't, women's basketball, our women's basketball team will be headed to state. So this Wednesday in Des Moines, they will be playing at 3:15. Whether you can make it or not, I know I'm going to be cheering hard for those ladies playing, so representing them. State DECA was this week, and actually it was today. And the students who went actually placed for nationals. So those who can go have the chance to go to Anaheim, California and represent for the national team. So congratulations to the DECA team and all the work they've put in. I know it's definitely something that I don't know if I could do, but definitely give huge shout out to them. I, oh, and yes, can't forget, Shrek the Musical will be held this Friday and Saturday night through our Cedar Falls drama program. I highly encourage going. All the students in it have put so much time and effort into it, and I know it's going to be great. That is all I have for this week. Any questions?
Any questions for Julie?
What time is it? I think there had been, is it 7:00 or 7:30?
7:30.
30, 7:30.
Yes, at the Cedar Falls High School Auditorium.
Both Friday and Saturday night?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you so much, Julie.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F on the agenda, the Secretary's Financial Report. Mr. Nusker.
If you would open up your financial file for the month of January, and I think we can get it to put that up on the screen. The first slide that you'll see will be for the general fund, and you'll notice that we had revenue of the month of just a little over $3 million. We did have a transfer from the River Hills Consortium Fund into the general fund to sort of clean up some tuition income from a couple of years ago. And then you'll see the expenditures for the month of 4.85 million, so for an ending fund balance of just under $7 billion, and that we're running about $1.1 million below we were a year ago from a cash perspective. If we go to the next slide, the management fund, you can see revenues for the month of about 4,000, expenditures of about 4,500, for an ending balance of $683,524, and that's running slightly below where we were a year ago. That's a plan we'll draw down, we've talked about that for a number of years now. Next slide would be the statewide one-cent sales tax. You can see revenue for the month of 409,000. Expenditures for the month, $437,000 were for the three elementary building projects, and then the 272,000 is transferred to Fund 40 for our debt service payments, so an ending balance of $6,489,186. And you can see what that compares to from a year ago. And also in the box, you can see what is restricted as required by our Series 2013 revenue bonds and what is unrestricted at this time. Next slide would be the physical plant and equipment levy, revenue and expenditures for the month, a revenue of 24,500 approximately, expenditures of 65,500 approximately, and you can see our ending fund balance of 3.434 million in comparison to where we were one year ago. Debt service fund, we have the transfer in from Fund 33 for our sinking fund. You can see the 272,698 plus a little bit of interest for a total available of 1,483,000. And then we had some follow-up bond refinancing expenses of $60,871 for an ending balance of 1,422,346, and that's a approximately $200,000 more than where we were a year ago at this time. Activity fund, very normal activity for January with just under 89,000 in revenue and just over $99,000 in expenditures for an ending balance of $625,773. Food service account, revenue of 250,495 for the month, expenditures of 177,118 for a balance of 586,986. And you can see that we're up approximately $80,000 from where we were one year ago. Student coffee shop fund, pretty normal activity for the month, 1745 in, 641 out. Their balance is $8175. Trust and agency accounts, revenue in, 11,591, expenditures of just under 19,000 for an ending balance of 241,24. And last but not least, River Hills Consortium Fund, and there you can see no revenue came in, expenditures of 108 as we flow those dollars through to, for the expense, and then there's that transfer to Fund 10 to clean up some expense that lingered for the last year. And so our ending balance in the River Hills account is zero, at which it should be. And with that, I would entertain any questions from the board.
Any questions for Doug? Hearing none, then the Secretary's Financial Report will be placed on file for audit. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Information Report, the Workshop Model.
Pam, in January, I presented a brief overview of the workshop model, and tonight we have Christine Mangridge, the Coordinator of Instructional Services, and Amy Colehouse, the Instructional Coach at Orchard Hill, to share more information with you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Awesome. Thank you so much for inviting us here today. We're excited to share with you. I'm Christine Mangridge, as Pam said, Instructional Services Coordinator.
I'm Amy Colehouse, and I'm Instructional Coach at Orchard Hill. Sorry, got a delay there. So this slide, I just want to say that when we kicked off our professional learning this year, it happened to be when the Olympics were going on. And so we kind of like latched on to that theme of the Olympics, and there happened to be a model lesson that we were going to share with our training that had to do with learning like it was gold. So it's just kind of stuck for the year. And so this particular slide happens to have our timeline of what we've been doing with Workshop Model for the past three years. Three years ago, as you know, we had just a really small implementation of two teachers that piloted the program. The following year, it was basically school-wide at Orchard Hill, and it also included a couple more teachers from the Hanson Elementary Building. And then this year, we've gone big, and we've gone district-wide. And this quote, which I guess it's a little bit funny to see there, really is why we went big. We knew that we wanted to have lasting change, that in order to have that happen, we had to get everybody on board and work as a system together with that, so. And to do that, we knew that we had to have a plan in place. And we started actually last spring with offering a class for graduate credit. I actually had 42 individuals that started and took that clear back last spring before we even got rolling with this as a district. They were able to take that for graduate credit. Then Amy and I had a fantastic experience going, being able to attend some firsthand training at Teachers College this past June. Do you have anything you want to mention about that?
I just think it was an amazing experience for us to go and get that firsthand learning to bring back and share with the district and our teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll share with that, too. Not everybody gets to go that applies to go, so we feel pretty privileged that Cedar Falls was able to attend the training.
It was a really amazing honor that we got selected to do that. So very motivated to come back, and we continued on with coordinating some of the professional development. We worked in tandem with the AEA and had some fantastic consultants that supported that. So we were able to provide training in August for all of our teachers. We had three days, there were a couple early in August, and then one right before the school year started. And then we've had ongoing what we call our Workshop Wednesdays, and this is where our fantastic instructional coaches really take the learning and synthesize what's been happening with their learning, the needs of the teachers, and then we roll that out in a variety of ways, whether it's just in the building, or if we bring people together as a grade level or grade spans. And it's really been some nice, authentic learning for everyone. So coaches have been a tremendous part of this plan. Tonight, what the big part that we really want to talk about, just briefly, is really what is workshop and why the workshop? And I'm going to speak first just a little bit. On the right-hand side, it shows some research, and this is from John Hattie. He has spent 15 or more years researching teaching practices, best practices through meta-analysis, and he's come up with some of those things that we really look to, to help guide us, to know if we're doing the right work. And those on the side show that they have well over a .4 effect size, and that's what he declares is significant growth.
What do you mean by .75? Is that a, I have no idea what that means.
He has, yeah, he has a algorithm, basically, that comes up with after all of his analysis of research. So he's looking at multiple research studies on these, and he comes up with an effect size of how much it impacts student learning.
I guess I'm not sure, like, is it a correlation? Like, what does a one-effect mean?
At least, so it, a zero, if it were a zero, it would be, it's going to affect those kids a little bit, more or less just by showing up, that's going to have an impact on them in a positive way. His, his definition of when it hits that .4, that's kind of that tipping point of where it makes a significant difference. Good question, thank you. So anyway, just knowing that we had some things that really correlated well with the workshop model that were definitely evidence-based practices that we know really fit the bill.
And I know you're familiar with this graphic of workshop model, and you've probably had some conversation on that, but we really just wanted to come back to and talk about that the workshop model framework is really an instructional framework that can really be applied to any content area. So we are choosing to take that model and apply it to our literacy instruction for both reading and writing. But as we're taking on that learning and that model, we're finding teachers who are implementing it and transferring it to math, science, even teachers who are transferring it to behavior plans and teaching students social skills and behavior skills. As you look at that graphic, it provides that predictable structure for students in the classroom, and as we get in that middle section where you see one-to-one conferring, independent practice, and small group work, is where teachers are really able to differentiate and meet student needs. We're really able to take students where they are and guarantee that growth for those students because they're able to meet them right where they are. So that's one of the amazing pieces about this model, is that it really allows teachers to zero in and take kids right where they are.
Very good. I'm just going to share just one brief piece of data that we have. This is a look at our FAST reading assessment data that we do for the state three times a year. This shows data from about the last year and a half, and the really incredible part is that every building has made growth, and that's fantastic. But what's really notable is that Orchard Hill, who has been a big part of this and has been implementing longer, they have taken a really good jump of almost 10 percentage points there. So we know that there's something that's working really well there, and that helped us to know that we needed to continue on with this. So instead of us talking so much, we're going to share a video, and this is a look from a teacher, one of our mentor teachers at Southdale Elementary, and she's just going to share and kind of like reiterate all those little pieces of workshop that we just talked about. [music] I say, and I heard somebody say something similar, sometimes in life, when you're experiencing bad luck, you have to remember to look on the bright side, or you have to remember to think positive. Could that be an example of kind of a bigger message or bigger meaning to that star, that shooting star sign that keeps coming up in the story? Yes, and lots of you found lots of different things that were brought up over and over. In fact, we could come up with lots of different things for lots of this. I heard one group mention, his leg rash kept coming up and up in the story, over and over and over. But that leg rash was nothing medicine was going to fix, right? We know that. So we thought, why does she keep bringing this up? Maybe the leg rash represents Rob's sadness and his bottled-up emotions? So maybe, we think of it this way, sometimes in life, when you're experiencing pain and you try to keep it in, it comes out in other ways. Maybe his rash was another way of letting his pain come out. Let's think, that's for Rob, though. Let's think about Sistine. How could that same message, that bigger meaning, be true for her? Sometimes in life, you experience bad things, okay, and trying to keep it bottled in, it comes out in other ways. How does Sistine let things come out? Her anger, her kind of aggressiveness, right? So even her keeping stuff bottled in is coming out. So maybe the rash was actually representing to us as readers, this idea that even when you're trying to keep things hidden, they find other ways of escaping. So here's what I want to remind you. Today, we learned that when you have an idea, or when an author has an idea, an object, okay, they might keep repeating it in the story and bringing it up over and over and over as a way of signaling you, hey, reader, pay attention, right here, I brought this up again. And then they get, forget about it for a while, and they bring it up again, and then they bring it up again. And it's your job as a reader to read intensely and notice those things? And as you're noticing them, ask, why does she or he keep doing that? And then think, what message or what meaning are they trying to send? So today, when you go off and you're reading in your own books, I want you to try this. Maybe you're already thinking in your head, I do know something that's repeated in my book. Maybe it's an object, maybe it's a phrase, maybe it's an action, maybe it's an image, okay? And think about what bigger meaning that might have and why they're doing it. And if you have a chance to find something in your story and you think you've got something, try jotting it down in your thinking section, please, just elaborating it. Please try that today if you come across something. That's something I want you to pay attention to today and every day when you read it. I will begin starting my job when I see you starting yours.
Okay, so you just saw one of our mentor teachers at Southdale, and you kind of saw a glimpse of the mini lesson where she's providing students that direct explicit instruction. Again, it really gives students that predictable structure that they need to real, to really be able to focus on the cognitive work that we want them to do.
What I'm going to share right now, I'm obviously not going to read these verbatim, but we hear from the teachers so often, and we acknowledge that this is hard work, but they have come so far, and they are, so many of them are eager to share their stories. This is exciting. One in particular that I'm going to share is an email I got just out of the blue, and she was telling me there was a million things going on, new stuff to work on, but she couldn't wait till parent-teacher conferences to tell, tell her parents about the incredible work that her kids have done, and you know, how much they've grown as readers. And so that was really, really exciting. And if you happen to be on any of our Facebook or Twitter pages, you're going to see it filled with lots and lots of pictures of the excitement that's going on. The really cool thing that I keep seeing is that there are more and more partnerships with students from different grade levels that they're just really learning from each other. So there's some nice partnerships that are forming. I'll just kind of swing through a few, but I highly encourage you to check out the Facebook and Twitter feeds. They're great.
I think, too, here's an example of really what we're getting at with workshop, is that not only are we teaching our students reading and writing skills, but we're fostering that love of reading that we want our students to leave our school system having. So this is a picture of at Orchard Hill, how students have now asked paras to read to them at lunch because they just have that burning desire and that love for literacy that we want to transfer.
Dr. Patie actually just happened to visit Orchard Hill last week, and he posted this in Twitter that he noticed that there was some incredible deep learning and thinking going on. And I just, I, this is another story I've just recently heard. There was an individual who isn't, maybe not quite on board with what we were And he posted this in Twitter that he noticed that there was some incredible deep learning and thinking going on. And I just, I, this is another story I've just recently heard. There was an individual who wasn't, maybe not quite on board with what we were doing just recently. And within their building, they got to walk through some classrooms and visit different grade levels. And this person who happens to teach fifth grade, saw second grade and couldn't believe the conversations these kids were having. And so, this person asked the students what they were doing, and they were able to articulate it and why they were doing what they were doing. And so, became very excited about it and actually shared with the instructional coach who shared with us the other day that, gee, if they can do that at second grade, I can't wait till they're fifth graders. So, that was some really good progress, we thought.
I think this next page, too, we want to just highlight that this is starting at kindergarten for our students. And we're really starting with the ground up, and we're building that foundation with students in kindergarten loving reading and writing and learning these valuable skills and really taking off to help grow our district.
So, none of this work could really be happening the way it is happening now without our instructional coaches. And so, I just had to post their pictures, much to their chagrin. I don't know. But I, you know, I don't, this is not fluff. I truly mean it, that this has made a huge difference in what's going on in our district because they really exemplify what it means to be lifelong learners. They attend monthly training at AEA 267, specifically on the workshop. They're able to take that and bring that right back to the building. And we weekly collaborate as a team, and we come up with, what's that next step? All the time, we're thinking about what are the needs in the buildings. So, it's fantastic. And the most powerful thing is they're not only working with teachers, but they're in the classroom modeling, and they're actually working with students, making a difference as well. Here's another look at them. They have led some of our professional learning opportunities. That's just been fantastic. And I have to share this, this chart. It's from some research from Joyce &amp; showers. And it talks about, on the left-hand column, it talks about, if you give, say, for example, a teacher, you read an article that has some theory and discussion in it, it's going to move you. You're going to think about it, but very likely, it's not going to really impact what's happening in the classroom. So, you add maybe some training to that, and it's going to have slightly more impact, but probably not in the classroom yet. You keep adding on, and you add that practice and feedback, and it has a little bit more. But, boy, you add that coaching in the classroom, and you're going to have some great impact directly with our students. And that's the really good part about this. This is my sixth year here for Cedar Falls District. And I can honestly say that I have seen our professional learning have had an impact on our students than I've ever seen. So, that's fantastic.
I think it's really powerful with this model. We're able to take learning, and coaches are able to go get that learning and then bring it back to our buildings and tailor it to what our teachers are needing and what our data is showing us. And then, we're able to follow up by being in classrooms and talking to teachers, how's it going? Let's reflect, let's fine-tune it, let's improve our practice. And so, we're really not just giving them learning, but we're really ensuring that it's happening in classrooms. And I think so often in education, we have initiatives, and we're constantly doing something. And this is so highly supported, and I think that that's why we're seeing so much success with not only our teachers feeling good, but most importantly, our student data, is that we're really, really supporting this and ensuring it makes it all the way to our students.
So, we just really have one last little video to share.
I think that video is such a great example, too, of showing what coaches and teachers and students are collaborating to create and showcase their learning.
Thank you. Is there any questions that you guys have?
Any questions from the board?
I'll share that, that second grade video last week, Hanson held an open house, and every grade level had a video, and they had anchor charts. So, parents could come in during the open house and watch that if they wanted. And another thing I wanted to point out is several of our media specialists have shared that the students are checking out more books than they ever have before.
The city library has mentioned that they are pulling away from time to time, too, because a lot of our kids are heading down there, too. So, that's great.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So, that love for learning.
I would reiterate, I have a second grade son, and his comprehension is fluency, his depth of questions. And I think that's attributed to the workshop model is unbelievable. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Christine and Amy, thank you for coming. Pam, thank you for sharing this information with us tonight. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item H on the agenda. Approve plans and specifications and set public hearing for North Cedar Elementary project. Doug?
I would like to introduce Mr. Dan Chandler from Structure Architects, and Mr. Michael Broquet from Lotus Engineering. And they will walk through the plans and specifications.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Good to see you all again. So, Mike and I thought we would start off by kind of giving you just a real quick overview of the plans, where they're at. We are scheduled to send them out to the contractors later this week. Pre-bid meeting on March 21st, and then receiving bids on April 4th. So, that's where we're at there. So, what you see in front of you here is the west, west elevation of the north end of the school. The area here to the left here, that's the music area. That's also the storm shelter portion of the building. The main entry, and this being office area here. The building is a series of brick and masonry walls, steel structure, masonry structure, metal panels on the gymnasium up here, back behind the office area. So, what we have here is the site plan. And what you can see here is the challenge that we were faced with. The existing building is this kind of interior line right there. And the addition itself is this area coming around on the west side, around to the north and to the east, and that and back down and tying back off here. So, to accomplish this, we worked with the city, with Andy and Doug and everyone. And they allowed us to get a variance so that we could come up to within 12 inches of the existing property line, which is a huge help to us because, and you can see, we took advantage of that along the west side to a great deal, and also along the north side. And then staying out of the existing flood, flood areas with the building. So, main entrance is right here off of Fern Avenue. Entry to the pre, pre-K area down in this area. Existing administration bill, administration office is right in this area right here. Then here on the back side, creating one of the playgrounds back here. Relocating the playground that's up here off into this area. Access, dock access for the kitchen is right, right here. So, with the kitchen being in this area. And I'll show you a floor plan here in just a moment. And then, also later, I'll kind of show you the phasing plan that goes into this because there's a lot of phases to this and how it all has to go together. And Mike will talk about some of that here in a moment. So, lay-down space for contractors, that would occur down in this area, potentially over here in the parking lot area. Access to this side of the building has to come from the backside. There's a rather steep grade right here, and there's really no access to get back into the side from Fern very easily. So, a lot of things that have to go on here phase-wise. So, okay. Floor plan, you've seen this in the past. Just give you a quick overview. North side of the building, again, music area, which is the safe room space, cafeteria, kitchen, gymnasium, mechanical space here, office, office area, reception, nurse's office. Coach's office is right here, another mechanical space right here, counselor's office, kindergarten, classrooms right here. The oranges, orange spaces that you see are special ed spaces. We've kind of scattered those across throughout the building so that there's not just one area that is dedicated to that. Pre-K right here. This is a new utility entrance, which is very critical to the entire process of the project. Media center, first and second grade, it's here. Colab space, some maker space right here, this darker blue, couple of small group rooms, a reading room, and colab space down here. So, what I thought I would do is have Mike kind of discuss some of the mechanical systems that we're going to be incorporating into this building.
Thanks, Dan. I'll just do a quick overview of the mechanical, electrical systems. The building will be completely sprinkled, will have fire protection throughout the building. That helps, as we went through the code review, it helps sprinkling with some of the firewalls and that such. So, we're going to do that. Mechanical system is going to be different than what we did at Aldridge. Because of the limitations that we have, we won't be able to do geothermal. We worked with CFU and the White Group, just like we did at Aldridge, evaluated our systems. And the most efficient system that we came up with was a VRF system. We actually have that incorporated both at Southdale and Hanson in the administration areas. So, if you want to take a look at what those are, feel free and take a trip over there. This is going to be expanded into the rest of the remodeling, the east wing, I'll call it. We've done some remodeling over the last two or three summers. Those units are going to stay as-is. So, that's a big change, is what we're going to do. And we worked through that with, with the district and making sure they feel comfortable about, about that approach. Electrically, we are going to go with all LED lighting throughout the building. When, like I said, some of the projects we've done in the past, the classrooms, we went ahead and did LED lighting in those classrooms already. Actually, I think those were one of the first rooms, classrooms that we decided to move forward as a district standard, so we're continuing that throughout the school. We are, we are also trying to be some, trying to save some equipment and repurpose some of the equipment. Probably about five years ago, we did electrical upgrade, anticipating remodeling the whole entire building. Well, we went through the calculations, and we are able to salvage and reuse existing switch gear. So, we are going to reuse that, and that's one of the critical pieces that has to happen this summer. As well as, there's a couple other electrical distribution panels that we're going to repurpose as well. So, trying to keep all of that in mind. And what we can't use here, we're going to try to use at Orchard Hill. So, we have one more shot at all of our equipment that we're going to not use here. Technology, it's going to be similar with what we did at Aldridge. So, I won't necessarily go through all that. It's, it's consistent with what we're trying to do there. Fire alarm, it will, it has a current fire alarm system. We'll maintain that throughout the project.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Going back here to the site plan, as Mike indicated, we're sprinkling the building. And what that allowed us to do, again, working with the city and the fire department, we do not have to create a fire lane around the backside of the building. So, there's, that's a pretty good offset in our minds to take care of that. So, okay, just kind of a quick overview. Okay, phasing plan, just going to go through this very quickly here so that you can get an idea of how, how really involved this is. As Mike indicated, up in this area, there's, the existing transformer sits here. We're moving it over into this space right here. And that work all has to be done by the start of school in '17. So, we've worked through that with some contractors, get their ideas on how to do things. And we moved the bid date up for this project for this specific reason.
If I can add, it's not, it's not only just moving the main service, it's backfeeding existing panels and making sure everything is active before next school year. So, it's...
So, we want to get the contractors in here and get them started just as soon as possible after bids have been taken so that they can start some of the outside work, getting prepped for some foundations and allow, while the kids are in school still. So, okay. So, then, throughout the summer, working in, around the perimeter here in these darker shaded areas, this area is an area that's been added. That's a new art, art room and an expansion for some of the special ed spaces. And these areas, then, this area specifically needs to be finished as quickly as possible after the start of school in August of '17 because we would like to use that for a, for, potentially for a lunchroom or any of the other uses that may well come into play. We've talked about eating lunch in their rooms. We've talked about art on a cart, music on a cart, you know, just anything we can to keep things moving and the kids learning in these spaces while construction is going on. So, by August of 2018, we need, we would like to have all of this, the work done in the shaded areas here. So, sometime March of '18 through June of '18, start, depending upon where the contractor's at, the demolition of the existing north wing of the building. We really don't want to do it while the kids are there, but maybe we could get a start on it during spring break, you know, if at all possible, just to get things going as best we can in that area. So, then, as we work through summer of '18, spring of '19, they're working on this area here. Then come summer of '19, there's some work to be done in this area here, to create a colab space, and also to create a pathway through the building at that point that, again, we worked with the fire marshal to make it palatable for him to get, not have to put the fire lane in. So, they were, they were very good to work with on that with us. Elevations, again, we have the north elevation facing Lance. So, again, a combination of brick, a lot of glass in the cafeteria space, you know, brick. The, the safe room in this building is being constructed from masonry in lieu of pre-cast. Because of the amount of windows that we put in at Aldridge, we really needed to use pre-cast to be able to better control some of the structural design there. So, then we have the west elevation... So, then we have the west elevation, this being the entrance right here, office space, kindergarten space coming down towards the pre-K, continuing on here, media center right here, and the first and second grade classrooms. So, that kind of gives you a real quick overview of what everything looks like. Through the process, we did add, you know, a little bit of square footage here and there. So, we're working, dealing with that. And with that, do you have any questions or other comments?
Questions from the board?
Lot of time to work through design development and look at all the spaces necessary that we have, not only in Aldridge, but our other elementaries. It's certainly been an exciting process and we appreciate the, the design teams work through this. It's complicated. It's a very tight site. And, and we know that there were a lot of discussions on how to maximize the, the spaces as well as be as efficient as possible to utilize those spaces. It's just pretty, it's just going to be some, some opportunities to look at how do we make sure that we have the least disruption on the school day with students, just like we did with the renovations in homes several years ago.
Will you go through the completion dates for each of the three again? Aldridge is completed?
Aldridge is completed in August of 18.
The fall of 18, okay.
The south portion of this one is completed August of 18, with the remainder being completed August of 19. Orchard basically is that same schedule.
Okay, thanks.
It's a little easier at Orchard because we can go to the north and just get started. You know, here, we're just, they're working in different areas all the time. They're very constricted, so...
Thank you.
Orchard, we can add on, then renovate. Here, we're kind of renovating, then adding on. So, it's kind of almost...
This is the more complicated of all three, really.
Yes, yes, it is.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications, and form of contract and set March 27, 2017, at 7:00 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2017 North Cedar Elementary Project.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. What a great opportunity. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. We're excited to get this moving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to aye on the agenda, the approved depository bank and maximum deposit resolution. Done.
I want to say that now comes the boring part of the meeting after listening to the workshop model and North Cedar work. But we do have a few things that we need to take care of here and as we work through these projects. The first of those items tonight is our depository banks and our maximum deposit limits. The board typically does this in July of every year. But with the receipt of our $32 million of general obligation bonds, which will be taking place next month, we need to make some slight adjustments to this. And we also have had some additional changes in banking institutions in the community. And so, the, the changes are Collins Community Credit Union has requested to be a part of the maximum depository bank limit for the board. And so, we've requesting a $20 million limit for them. Depeco Credit Union also is new to the community. They are asking for the same $20 million limit. Farmer State Bank, we would like to raise that from the $20 million to $35 million. The primary reason for that raise is that Farmers is going to be the main depository and checking account for the new Fund 31 where all the receipts will come into. And so, that's why we need that $35 million limit because we'll have 32.9 in there when, when all the funds roll in. Liberty Bank is no longer in town, so we need to drop them to zero, of course. And then Veridian has also requested that they be a part of our list and so that they can bid on investment opportunities as well. And we would set them at $20 million. And of course, all these financial institutions must meet Iowa Code, Chapter 12(c) for public fund deposits as well as our board policy, 802.2.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have a motion to approve the depository bank and maximum resolution?
I move to amend as presented the depository banks and maximum resolution amounts for the 2016-17 school year, effective March 1, 2017.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Do we get, so I, I know on some of our deposits, we have the roaring rate of 0.5%. And on others, we have .15%. It sounds like there's a lot of interest in holding our money. Is there, is there any chance of, of getting some of these banks maybe to up that a little bit? It's got to look nice on their ratios to have such a large cash deposit sitting in their banks.
I would say to you, the proof in the pudding will be next March when, when we, we will ask all the financial institutions on this list to provide us quotations for investment opportunities for the $32 million that, of general obligation bonds. We anticipate that we'll probably spend those down to near zero in about 28 months or so. And so, we'll set up varying lengths of time for CDs or money markets. We are looking at possibly some securities, but that becomes a little bit more difficult to work through as we've got to make sure we follow Chapter 12(c) as well as our own board policy if we, if that's the direction we were to choose. But our hope would be yes, that we would be able to turn a little bit higher rate of return.
So, if we raise Farmers, for example, up to the 35, which gives us room to receive all these funds, yet if another bank is more aggressive on their rate, we can always, this is something we can always modify. We can take one of these other approved banks and up them, up them to the, just take a simple board action and we can raise them up and the funds could go to their bank rather than to, rather than to Farmers, if somebody bid more aggressively on the rates.
And like I said, the main reason why we're moving Farmers to 35 is we do have a couple of investments with them currently. And with the addition of the general obligation bonds, we'll be bumping pretty close to that $35 million limit. Those funds may only be with Farmers for literally one day. But the Code of Iowa is very specific about not being able to, not exceeding a depository ceiling. We want to make sure that we comply with that.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
We've got it.
We already did it.
Oh, excuse me, we had the motion, sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye. This is a... The motion is approved. Thank you. Moving on to item L on the agenda, the resolution appointing pay agent. Did I miss one? K? J? The resolution appointing paying agent, bond register, transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond register, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of same. And this will be a roll call vote.
And what we have here, this is the first of four resolutions that we'll need to walk through tonight for the final piece of the puzzle for this sale of the $32 million general obligation bond. What we're doing in this resolution is approving Bankers Trust of Des Moines, who will serve as our pay agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent. Basically, what that means in English is that they will manage the bonds when the proceeds come into them. They'll make sure that they work with the bond registrar and to make, and, and get those bonds set up for those individuals or corporations that wish to purchase those bonds. And then the district also uses bankers as sort of our flow-through. We make the wire transfer to bankers and then bankers in turn pays the bonds on those principal and interest payments.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, bonds, excuse me, Series 2017 of the Cedar Falls Community School District, state of Iowa, in the amount of $32 million.
Oh, that's not the right one.
Wrong one? Wrong one?
Your K. Or a J?
Your J, okay, sorry.
Right. I move to approve the resolution appointing Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of same.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jim, and this will be a roll call vote.
I need a roll call vote. Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Canyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
And Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now to item K, the approval of the tax exemption certificate. This will be a roll call vote also.
Okay, this is the second of four that we have to deal with. What we do with the tax exempt certificate is that basically it's stating that the district will comply with IRS regulations. It also talks about the timing of the bond sale, that the bond amount and, and any premium associated with that, of which in this case, we do have a premium with this bond sale. It talks about the purpose of the bonds, which of course is to construct a new elementary plus the additions to North Cedar and Orchard Hill elementaries. It states that these are government bonds. It also discusses and talks about rebate and arbitrage issues that the district may have. And it also talks about investment restrictions, which basically means we can't invest the, the bonds for more than what our interest rate is on the bonds. So, and simply put, I would be very happy to take an interest rate on the bonds greater than 3%, but I couldn't because that would be exceeding the amount. The other thing is, you also see within this in your supplementary information we sent you was a copy of the IRS Form 8036, or 8386, excuse me, which is what we have to file in association with the bond sale.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the tax exemption certificate?
I move the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved.
Thank you, Suzie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Doug. This is a roll call vote.
This is a roll call vote. Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Canyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
And Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the approval of continuing disclosure certificate, item L on the agenda. And this will be a roll call.
What we're doing with this resolution is we're basically stating that we're going to comply with SEC Rule 15-2c-12b5 for those of you that are really into the SEC regulations. And that's the annual financial disclosure of district financial documents, or simply known as our annual audit. Then also, we will make sure that we file with them mutual securities rulemaking board on their electronic municipal marketing access system, or otherwise in the vernacular called Emma, and making sure that we post the, the bonds, all the actions that were going on with that. A similar thing we had to do with that when we refinanced our revenue bonds a few months ago. We actually had to post on Emma that we were going to refinance those revenue bonds and we had to walk through that process. And that's a part of the new SEC rules for public institutions and general obligations of revenue bonds.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Do we have a motion to approve the continuing disclosure certificate?
I move the form of continuing disclosure certificate as presented be placed on file and approved.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
There will be a roll call vote.
A roll call vote for this, please. Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Canyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
And Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Thank you. It's motions passed.
Moving on to item N, the resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2017 of the Cedar Falls Community School District, state of Iowa, in the amount of $32 million and levying a tax for payment thereof.
And this is the last of the four resolutions we need to deal with this evening. And this is probably the most important one for this is, the board is approving the issuance of the bonds. It's approving the annual principal and interest payment schedule, the term of the bonds, the redemption schedule, registration of the bonds, as well as the facsimile or a copy of the actual bond is with, is included within the documents. So, you're approving that as well.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2017 of the Cedar Falls Community School District, state of Iowa, in the amount of $32 million and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Okay, a roll call vote. Dr. Canyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you, Doug. Moving on to item N on the agenda, the approval of the 2017-2018 Teamster contracts. Dr. Talbot?
Yeah, thank you. A tentative agreement was reached on February 23, 2017 on a contract to cover a one-year period, July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, on base wages. The second year of the 2016-2018 agreement on language items will take effect on July 1, 2017, and run through June 30, 2018. This tentative agreement has been ratified by Teamsters members. The base wage increase would be 35 cents per hour for current employees and 27 cents per hour increase on the starting base rates for new employees. The increase on base wages for returning employees is 2.19%, which includes FICA and IPIs. Insurance rate increases, including employee contributions, have yet to be finalized by the district. We project the total package settlement will fall within the district's fiscal year 18 supplemental state aid and financial parameters agreed upon with the board. We recommend acceptance of this agreement.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have a motion to approve the tentative agreement?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments for Adrian? Suzie seconded.
So, if there's some details that aren't worked out yet, right when you were talking about the insurance?
Due to the change in Chapter 20, insurance is now an excluded subject of collective negotiation. So, now it is the sole prerogative of the district to establish the insurance premium rates for the year in question. So, those have yet to be finalized. But given the projections of what those premium rates will likely be by Mr. Nevsky, we know with confidence that the total package will be falling within the supplemental state aid that we'll receive from the state.
So, if we vote yes tonight to ratify, then there'll be a separate vote on the insurance? That, that's what I'm not understanding on what, what exactly?
No, we, we do not need to bring the insurance rates back to the board for action. Those, because they fall within the parameters that you've set for us for neglecting negotiations, we will just establish those by administrative decision. And I'm sure Dr. Paty will communicate those to you if you need to have that detail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, Doug. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Adrian. Thank you, Doug, for this part. Appreciate it. Moving on to approval of land purchase, item O on the agenda. Dr. Paty?
Yes, just to go back over some of the main points with the previous discussion that we've held now really over the last several months to pull up the PowerPoint presentation. And we'll go through just a couple of the slides very, very quickly. We, we know that through the discussion, we've had several different opportunities to, to gather data, to gather input, and look at the, the purchase of this property for a potential and future high school project. If you go through the, the next slide and go into the next slide, you'll see, we know we have enrollment growth. And, and we know through RSP and Associates, our demographer, our projections are to grow over 1,000 students in the next 10 years. We have gained students progressively over the last six to eight school years. And, and those projections have held very, very true to what our demographer said that we would increase by. If you go to the next slide, we, we do know... slide, we do know also that our secondary projection models show that the high school is going to be over capacity by 2019 to 2020 school year. That is due, if you look at the next slide, we do our enrollment projections. We just heard during our work session that one of our elementaries, we have not gone through kindergarten roundup in all of our elementaries, but we have very large kindergarten anticipated numbers coming through our system and starting to enroll into our district. And you can see by the number of buildings that are over capacity, but also projected to be over capacity due to those class sizes that are coming in. Cedar Falls is a district that people choose to move to. You can see the new housing growth, which we'll see in a bit as well. The next slide goes into details about some of the previous information that we've had over multiple studies that we've done as a district or shared with our board. We know to add on to the current high schools about a $60 million cost. Within 15 years, even if we expand that site, we will be over capacity because there's just not room to continue to grow with that current site. We have had studies, and studies have shared that we need to have roughly 40 to 50 acres to be able to have the comprehensive program that we know we need to have with the high school. So it's really a life cycle cost expenditure that we're looking at. And then the next slide talks about for a new high school, that is about 80 to 85 million, but certainly that is over the course of 50 years. And certainly, it makes sense when you look at the overall expenditure versus time commitment on what those next steps should be and could be. Just for comparison purposes, Waukees Community School District and the city of Waukees just recently purchased 160 acres for what's going to be their second high school site. They are approaching 2,000 students within their current high school, 1012 building, and they have just purchased that as of April 2016 to move forward with their second high school, which they project to be completed by 2021. The next slide talks about comparisons. We've gone through many, many comparisons, look at different locations, different sites, different opportunities. One site that we looked at, but it was just financially not feasible, was a parcel of land of 50 acres that just sold for 86,000 per acre here within this last fiscal year. The next slide talks about some of the other comparisons with reviewing the mall site. That's come up several different times. Can that be potentially used? Right now, that's just cost prohibitive, plus it takes away some very strong growing commercial sites and does not have the acreage necessary, even when you look at the really strong commercial sites right along university. The next slide, and again, I know the board has heard this multiple times, Sartor Hospital site, if and when that becomes available. We also know that that just is a cost prohibitive due to the age and construction of the building, but also just continues to have a landlocked site. Next slide talks about land outside of our city limits. We explored a large amount of options. We have to be cognizant of our district boundaries. A lot of people have said, well, there's available land down by Highway 20. That is not in the Cedar Falls Community School District boundaries. That's actually in Hudson School District's boundary. So we have to be cognizant of where our boundaries are at. Plus, as we looked further outside the city limits, we came to quickly realize the cost of land was about the same as what we're looking at with this project we are recommending to the board this evening. But the cost to bring utilities and other services to those sites became very cost prohibitive, and it didn't make sense. Plus, we wanted to have a site that had strong walkability, bikeability, as well as to make sure we had efficiency with transportation cost. Next slide goes into our proposed purchase is 50 acres with the, from the University of Northern Iowa. The next slide shows the proposed opportunities with this. The cost actually is below $25,000 per acre. And in fact, $500,000 of the cost goes to co-sharing some green spaces, some PE spaces, some intermural spaces, that we would spend anyway on renovated new high school site. So that is money that we would expend, and so when you look at that cost, it actually brings it down to about $14,800 per acre. 10 years ago, the district bought new land for the elementary that we're currently building, and we spent about $8,000 per acre for that land. So you can see comparatively, it's a very strong price per acre. With the going rate for buildable acreage across the community, especially with strong accessibility, is in that $30,000 to $40,000 per acre for a large plot of land, or higher, depending on comparison with the hospital site for 86,000. We know that the current use of land will continue until a high school is approved by the community. As you go to the next slide, then, our payments, you'll see that this is paid for once in sales tax. We know that this is in no interest that's charged. During this, the rest of this fiscal year, we'll pay $620,000, and then $310,000 on March 31 of 18, and $310,000 on March 31 of 2019. We also have been working with the city. As you look at the next slide, as far as where are we going to have growth and what's going to happen as our city continues to have commercial, residential, and economic growth. Here, you can see that the purple areas are areas that we anticipate being built out over the next 10 years, the yellow areas that we continue to anticipate being built out over the next five years. This is work not only from our city and county, but also from our developers. The next slide, I think you have to click through a couple bullets, I apologize, goes into future considerations. We've worked very closely with our city, just had another meeting this past week to talk about site planning, access planning, development planning, and they will be working with us and developing a plan for continued access to the site. Not only will Green Hill Road be starting this upcoming spring, work on throughout the summer, which comes out directly south of this 50 acre, and will have direct access to the university, direct access back down to Hudson, which then has access all the way over to Highway 58, but also a site plan for the remainder of the access. We know that this is certainly a focus of efficiency environmentally, but also to look long-term at how can we cost-share parking lots and use green spaces for efficient use of taxpayer dollars well into the future. Plus, I think one of the most positive aspects of this, deeper collaboration, opportunities with the University of Northern Iowa. We have over 600 UNI students that come into our buildings every single year, and a number of our students that go directly to UNI to take courses and classes. There's just opportunities for deeper collaboration, which they're very much open to, as are we. So, a lot of strong considerations. The next slide goes into our recommendation, and certainly administration's recommendation based on all of the research, all the data, the growth expectations, et cetera, as to move forward with a purchase agreement. It's my honor, and honestly, one of the easiest recommendations I've had the honor to make to say I recommend moving forward with the purchase of property from University of Northern Iowa for a potential future high school.
Andy, could you just clarify? I think that's an old slide, because the recommendation is to set a public hearing, and we have done the public hearing.
We have done a public hearing. I apologize, yeah. So we've already done the public hearing. This is from just the same presentation that we've used the last several board meetings. So, we've held the public hearing. We've given this presentation for multiple meetings, and certainly, this has been an ongoing discussion with the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I walk through the?
Sure, yeah. Let's go ahead and walk through the contract.
Let's walk through the contract real quickly. Again, as Dr. Paty stated, the purchase price is $1,240,000. It consists of a $20,000 payment, which is due by March 31, and then a $600,000 payment, which is due on closing, and closing is defined as by June 30 of 2017. And then two equal payments of $310,000, one due March 31, 2018, and then the other one, March 31, 2019. Within the document, it talks about both parties will exercise good faith efforts and enter into a 2080 agreement for the use of those recreation fields. So we'll do that. Also, specifically states that if the buyer chooses to sell the property at a future date, that'd be the district, the buyer agrees to provide the seller first opportunity to purchase that property for the purchase price identified in, or the 1.24 million, plus an inflationary increase determined by the National Consumer Price Index. So if the district at some point in the future did wish to not use the property, it would have that option to sell it back to UNI first. And then, during the 90 days after the acceptance, both the university and the school district have a period where we can check the site for any potential environmental hazards, make sure that the survey is agreed to by both parties, those sorts of things. We don't anticipate any of that, but that's in there. It also includes making sure that we can get, start working on abstract and title changes, those sorts of things as well. The only other thing that I would bring up about the agreement is the agreement would be subject to approval by the board of regents, and I don't anticipate any changes, but I can't speak directly for the board of regents.
Thank you, Doug.
And they've already approved the scope of the agreement, so.
All right, good. Do we have a motion to approve?
All right, one more comment.
Yes.
You, Dr. Paty, you mentioned about 600 UNI students are in our school system visiting. You should also point out that a huge amount of professors also are involved at the schools. We are asked upon to volunteer for such things as our code, art projects, et cetera. Especially now that both the high school and the university are both getting actively into 3D printing. There's a lot of collaboration going on there, and a plot of land near the University of Northern Iowa will facilitate this high school faculty/university faculty collaboration.
Exactly. We have to consider ourselves a pre-K20 program to make sure that we continue to foster learning at all levels. So thank you for that. That's very well stated.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have a motion?
Whereas the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Directors believes that the purchase of the property under the terms and conditions set forth in the real estate contract is in the best interest of the school district and its students, it is therefore resolved as follows: to approve the real estate contract presented at this meeting between the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, and the Cedar Falls Community School District; that the president and secretary are hereby authorized and directed to execute the real estate contract on behalf of the Board of Directors. After approval and execution of the real estate contract by the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, and the superintendent and the administrative team shall proceed with due diligence process as provided in the real estate contract. The superintendent and the administrative team shall work with the University of Northern Iowa and the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, to take all steps necessary to complete this transaction.
Thank you, Susie. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to thank the people that spoke tonight, and we have been contacted by so many people, both supportive and with concerns. We've been able to reach out and talk to people. We've been able to explain why we are excited about this opportunity. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for being so involved with all this.
Yeah.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
This will be a roll call vote.
Yep, this is a roll call vote. Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
I abstain.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
And Dr. Canyon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And if I could just point out the reason for abstaining, there's some farmland west of this site on Highway 27. It's been in my family for over 50 years, and so in order to avoid any conflict of interest is why I'm abstaining.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, moving on. Item P on the agenda, we are going to table. We don't have the final document back, so we think we'll bring it back to, at our next meeting on the 27th of March.
Correct.
So we're moving on then to chapters three and four, our book study, Fierce Conversation.
I think it's always important to point out every time we have these book study questions to ensure that people understand with this book, and it is entitled Fierce Conversations, it's not about sometimes that initial thought that people might have with fierce. It is a conversation really focused on what the definition is on the front cover of the book, and it's talk about robust, intense, passionate, and unbridled conversations to ensure that we achieve success at work and in life, one conversation at a time. So this session, we really focused on chapter three and four. Chapter three is entitled, Be Here, Prepare to Be Nowhere Else, and chapter four, Tackle Your Toughest Challenge Today. Interestingly enough, we are going through a training administratively with all of our administrators, focused on fierce conversations. And one of the first questions that was asked of us was, when you look at the entirety of the book, which of these chapters do you think is your greatest challenge? And I picked chapter number three, Be Here, Prepare to Be Nowhere Else, that level of engagement, that level of focus. And again, we sent out some questions. One of the questions that I had that I would just throw out to board members is that question number two. It's a quote from page 103 that says, "Many think that not speaking when someone else is talking is the same as listening." What does that mean to you? And have you been in those situations before? And really, Susan Scott talks about how do you help deal with that and ensure that listening, hearing, and not talking sometimes are different things?
Well, they absolutely are. I mean, a lot, right? I mean, a lot of times, I mean, we have a lot on our minds, and we're quietly sitting there, but yet our minds could be elsewhere. And so I think maybe a large portion of coffee can help focus if there were any supplements to that, so.
And she gave the example that we are all very aware when someone is not really listening to us. I mean, there are cues and so on, and so, and we know how that feels. So I thought that was good that she brought that up, because then you think, okay, guilty. But it makes you think that we do that to others as well.
Does anybody have strategies that they've used? If you've noticed during a conversation you've had with somebody, or maybe you've noticed of yourself when you're having conversations of how do you bring yourself back to being present?
There's a technique that they use in applied improvisation sometimes, and the way they demonstrate it is when somebody is taught, the person demonstrating is talking, and you're supposed to speak along with them out loud as part of the demo, which is actually surprisingly easy to do. And then you try to be behind them a second, which is annoying to the speaker, but you can do it. And then it's almost impossible to be ahead. And then when you find, so then after you've demonstrated that, what they say is, when you're finding it hard to focus on somebody, play that game without moving your lips, basically. See if you can speak along with the speaker not being behind or ahead of them. Don't anticipate what they're going to say, just kind of. And I've found when I've tried it, it has helped me focus.
I believe eye contact. And if you're focusing on what you're going, your rebuttal is, is not listening.
Right.
It's easy to want to. How do I answer that question?
How do I respond?
How do I respond?
What are they saying?
I think body language, too. You know, when you listen to someone in an open manner with open arms and not arms crossed, maybe not leaning back, that you're, you know, you are more attentive to what they're saying, too. I wrote down really asking and really listening. So, you know, ask clarifying questions, maybe when they're talking, to at least make them understand that you are listening, or help them understand that you are listening.
One thing I've been doing since I hit 50 and I stopped caring as much about anything is when I'm finding it hard to listen to somebody because they're talking about something I cannot relate to, I sometimes just admit it. You know, I mean, it's like, you know, I'm sure your golf game is really fascinating, but I cannot relate to that. You're an interesting person. Can we talk about something else? And I think people, it's weird to say it, but I think people actually appreciate the fact that
You can't follow it.
I'm not nodding and smiling.
And I think in fierce conversations, Susan talks quite a bit about that, that it's really being bold, honest, and making sure that people understand what your contexts are. Because it's easy to play the head nod game, but you don't always want to do that because it's about
It's disrespectful. It's disrespectful if you're doing that.
Agreed.
One thing she does not speak to, but I hear, we do it frequently, we repeat, let me say what I'm hearing you say, or we repeat back to them. And I mean, it's a, I guess it's a reinforcement that you are understanding or trying to listen to.
Yep. And I'm a very poor example tonight, because I didn't bring my own book with all my personal notes in it, so I apologize. So I'm borrowing So, I'm borrowing choices real quick. Pages 109 to 111, it really talked about common mistakes made during one-to-one conversations, listed on those pages. And I thought it was kind of interesting, when you go through those common mistakes, it goes anywhere from trying to take the problem away from somebody, maybe not inquiring about the feelings associated with that individual, maybe allowing interruptions, as sometimes we all live in this day and age with technology, assuming your one-to-ones are effective, running out of time, or just saying, well, you know, I need to go, or tap on your watch. As you looked at those, do you find that you struggle with any one of those during personal or professional conversations, or do any of those resonate with board members that say, wow, those are ones that really concern me when I see that in other people?
This is hard to admit how bad we are. The funny thing is, every time I say this, I look to Dan Conrad, because he's like, oh, yeah. I would say one of my problems is doing most of the talking. Wouldn't you agree with that, Dan?
Yeah, that's it.
Because you come into a meeting, and you know what you want to talk about, and you think you have it all figured out, and so, that would be, I mean, it's a huge weakness of mine, because, you know, you just come with those pre-assumptions and, you know, Andy's shaking his head, too.
No, no, well, I'm saying, because a future chapter is, let silence do the heavy lifting, and that is so important. Sometimes, we fill in the gap, and we feel like we have to fill in the gap. Sometimes, silence is a very powerful motivator to get to the truth and get to the honest questions that need to be asked. So, that's why I was smiling, not because I attribute that to you.
You attribute it. It's okay. I'm, you owned it. I can, I can own it, that's right.
That's okay, Jenny, I'm trying to solve your problems while you're
I appreciate that.
I don't really hear you, I'm like, oh, no, back, go three sentences back, I can solve that for you.
That was just a powerful few pages for me, because it really made me self-reflect on the things that I do, and sometimes, maybe what I impose on other people by trying to solve their problems. Todd Whittaker talks, I think it was number three or number four, a common mistake, take your monkey off of somebody else's back, that sometimes, we're all servants, and sometimes we'll just say, hey, let me take care of there, let me do that, but sometimes, it's more powerful to say, what is your solution to be able to solve that problem? Can we come up with steps that you can take to help come to a resolution? And I think those are powerful suggestions.
Others?
Chapter four, tackle
Can I make one more comment about chapter three? I think that we could have, so, a secret rule, which goes from 15 to 115, it's on the top of 116, as far as just kind of a, four, you know, rules. Says, the rule I give myself in order to accomplish the goals of the conversation, which are two, we think about these for our meetings, interrogate reality, provoke learning, tackle tough issues, and enrich relationships, as far as our goal as a board.
Those are tremendous, because all four of them, I think, are extremely important. And sometimes, we forget about that enriching relationship at the end, that it's all about not only interrogating reality, but having deep conversations should enrich a relationship. Very good. Chapter four, I loved some of the analogies she used in this, and at times, I think we all get caught in whacking moles sometimes. And she talked a lot about trying to overcome the whacking of the moles, and how do you move on to grub hunting? And the analogy, just for members in the audience, was sometimes, when you look at solving a problem of getting moles out of your yard, you focus on how do you get the, remove the moles without trying to find the most common solution? How do you get rid of the grubs in your yard so the moles leave, so you don't have to worry about the moles? And that was one of the questions I put down. How have you, in your personal and professional lives, overcome the whacking of the moles and really focused in on grub hunting? Are there stories, solutions, challenges that you've overcome to really focus on the root cause of a challenge or a situation?
I'm very privileged that I have a job that has kind of flexible time. Thursdays, no moles at all, I let them run rampant, I don't care what they do to my garden, or if they destroy the house. I have a paper I'm writing, and Thursday, I show up at the library at 8:00 AM, and I do not care what other things have to be done. And if it means I suffer a little Friday, so be it. But I, so I designate a day of the week where the little things are not going to be dealt with, because I wasn't getting some stuff done, that I just had to have hours of focused concentration. So, that really resonated with me, and I was thinking, oh, yeah, Thursdays.
Others?
I think we need to step back and just, and that's something I have to do. We get so focused and so intent on what we're doing, and if you just step back, it's sort of like seeing a broader, bigger picture. And there may be other factors that, if you're so focused in, that you can't, you can't even see those. And I find myself doing, I can be pretty intense about what I'm working on, and I have to just sort of step back and look around a little bit, like, oh, it's sunshining.
I think this is the context that she also made about listmakers. And I am a self-professed listmaker from today, but it doesn't kill me when I don't get it all done. I mean, you have, you have to focus on the issue that comes to hand, rather than worrying about, I'm not getting other things done because of this. And an administrator, a teacher
Exactly.
Is, is a prime example.
The moles can distract you quick, so, exactly.
The paragraph that really resonated to me that I highlighted was the person who asks work teams, on a scale of one to 10, what level would you like to be confronted, 10 being told straight, no holds barred, what someone thinks or feels about something you've said or done? And everybody said basically eight, nine, and 10. And then, they were asked, well, when people give you feedback, at what level it is? And they said, like, two, three, or four.
We're much more
Yeah.
That kind of opened my eyes a little bit, because I'm totally a two, three, or four person.
And I've recently used that line when talking with somebody to find out, give me that feedback, what level do you want me at? To be able to provide that honest feedback. And I think that's important, to understand that, engage that. Anything else within these chapters that resonated with board members that were aha moments?
You people, you Spanish speakers, I didn't realize that con meant
With.
With. And when they break down the conversation, I mean, it really, you know, conveys the importance that it is a two-way communication.
I think sometimes, too, I was, I wrote down that I need to continue the invitation. Too often, we, you know, try to reach out to someone once, and maybe twice, and then third time, and then, all of a sudden, you just say, I'm done. And it's worth continuing to invite that person into conversation, so you can have those important conversations. The one thing that I'm not good at is that when they talk about an opening statement, and I'm going to practice that, I'm going to work on that, because there are times that I, I mean, I talk to all of you board members, and, you know, sometimes, I do kind of wing that part of it, and I appreciated her thoughtfulness when she was talking about the opening statement, and to write it down and practice it, and I'm not sure that I would go that far, but at least to be more thoughtful about it.
Been a good book?
Yes.
Beneficial?
Yes.
Very.
Good. We are actually going on our third or fourth day of training tomorrow with our administrative team.
Are you training with Susan Scott, or somebody?
No, it's actually local trainers that are coming in actually from the AEA, that's working not only with our administrators, but I think there's maybe five administrators from other districts that are working with us. So, it's been tremendous conversations as we go through this group, so, yeah. So, thank you for going through this as a board, and certainly, the conversation.
Thank you for including us.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report, March 20, oops, it's your superintendent's report, not mine.
No, please. March 27th is our next board meeting, we'll have our preliminary budget. We also, and this has come before the board multiple times, the baseball field and plans to redo some of the work at that field, we'll start bringing plans to the board in April. We do know that spring break is coming up as well, and certainly know that everybody's excited and looking forward to hopefully, very good weather over spring break, so, very exciting times.
Good. Any questions or comments or concerns from the board?
I just had a quick question. I know we're going to get a report on this later, but with scheduling happening, I know we're looking at that, and I've had a lot of people asking me, so, what are we offering for CAPS next year, and what will we be offering for CTE next year?
Right now, the CAPS will be two additional strands in addition to the engineering strand that we're currently offering. We're off, we will be, we have offered a teacher education strand that we're currently working with the University of Northern Iowa, as well as Hawkeye, to provide opportunities for those students to meet their Level 1 experience, once they complete the CAPS experience. The other one will be a communication and design strand, which will kind of be a combination of entrepreneurship, web design, computer science, kind of marketing wrapped into one. We have a number of businesses in our community that are kind of doing a little bit of all of that, and they have projects that our students would be able to complete as part of that. So, we still are working out the college credit for that with Hawkeye, we have a meeting with them next Monday to work those details out as well. CTE portion, as far as Waterloo schools, that's something we will introduce to our students next fall, because that's not available to our students until second semester, as well as our CAPS program at this particular time is not open to Waterloo students until we have all those agreements in place.
So, this, this fall, like
So, that'll be this coming fall, yeah.
Okay.
That'll be this fall. The hope is, is that we will have some students that will be going back and forth between the two districts during the second semester of next year.
Good.
I have a code section that's 2080, so we always call them 2080 agreements we need to have in place to be able to talk about what that partnership looks like, and with registration happening now for students and families, we knew we wouldn't be able to get that in place for this fall, but next spring is the intent, which is exciting.
We would hope that within the next month or so, we will have that, those things kind of at least worked out, and then, we can come back and give a better report as to not only CAPS for next year, but CAPS this year and how that's going. Our hope is, we can bring some students in with you to share with you some of the projects that they're working on, maybe some of our employers as well.
And just to clarify for parents or students who are trying to become more familiar with, even with the engineering, I mean, there is some flexibility, it's not like you, even in the engineering one, you get in there and you're an engineer, there's flexibility within those strands to kind of
That's correct. There's no prerequisites to get into any of those strands. So, we have students in our engineering program right now, or in the engineering class, that really have very little experience on the engineering coursework that we currently offer through Project Lead the Way, so, and we've got some students that have taken almost all of our Project Lead the Way classes. So, we have a wide range of experiences of those students, and so, the trick is to try to find experiences and projects for those students to work on, based on their skills and their abilities at this particular time. But that's what Ethan and Nate Clayberg have done a really good job working with our local business folks to really come up with projects that'll fit the skills of the kids that we do have.
And their interests, I mean, that's a big part of it, too, right?
It is, definitely.
Great.
Can you remind us how many we have currently in that for this
Currently, there are 14 students that are enrolled this semester.
And what would you expect for the fall?
Preliminary numbers right now, again, we have not worked enough with students and counselors to determine whether everything fits into their schedule, but we're up to 57 students that have signed up for the three strands next year.
Oh, that's great.
So, we're excited about that.
That's good.
One of the concerns we'll have is that if we have that many students, are we going to be able to offer some slots to Waterloo schools? Because we're really going to be strapped for a number of seats in our programs right now.
Sure.
We knew it would grow, we didn't know maybe it would grow
That fast.
Quick.
Yeah.
Yep, and which is exciting, you know, Waki talked with us about that, Blue Valley talked about the growth, but, yeah, we are seeing exponential growth at this time.
Good, that's exciting. Thanks, Jenny, for bringing that.
All three strands start this fall for our students.
Depending on students, you know, because we, with the students, we will have to decide whether we're going to offer those as one section or two sections. So, if it's, if it's one section, we'll make a decision whether that's going to be offered first semester or second semester. If we have enough, for example, I take a look at the kids that we have, I think we have like 23 students signed up for the education strand right now. If we break that into two different sections of 12 or 13 strands of students with each strand, you and I would like to see that offered in the morning only, just because that's when, if students are out in elementary schools especially, that's when a lot of their direct instruction occurs. So, we would probably offer a first semester section and a second semester section, to look at it that way. If we have a number of students in some of the other strands that continue to grow with that, we might have to offer a morning and an afternoon session. So, it's still flexible, and we have to work around the schedules that we have for staff that we're going to be able to put in these positions as teachers, as well as those students' schedules, as to where it fits in best with their day as well.
Can they do more than one semester in the same strand, or is it kind of the intention that they do one semester?
No, they could, they could do multiple semesters. They wouldn't be able to do more than one strand each semester, simply because they're three-hour blocks of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Okay, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education enter into closed session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session, 2011, Code of Iowa, 21.5 LI.
Thank you, Jim. This is a roll call. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Susie. Roll call vote.
And Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Kenyon?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Okay, I would ask everybody associated, not associated with this closed session to please leave the room, and for those of you in the audience, this will conclude our television broadcast for this evening.